Good evening. I think we will call the meeting to order here, and so I would like to welcome everyone to the July 13, 2022, meeting of the Brentwood Planning and Zoning Commission. If you'd please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thanks, everyone. Mr. Moore, could you call the roll, please?
Cherry Bilderback.
Here.
Mark Fivazza.
Here.
Paul Moran. John Nuremberger. Leslie Nichols. I am present. John Ritter. Lisa Shering.
Present.
Matt Foreman.
Present.
Carl Carlin. Jeff Hunt.
Present.
And Tricia Graves.
Here.
I wasn't certain to call on you, but you are there. We have a quorum, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. All right. Next item is the agenda approval. I do believe we may have a modification of the agenda tonight. I believe we have a desire to add under new business, Item C, which would be nominations for officers. Is that, or actually, do I have a motion for the amendment of the agenda? I guess is what we need.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All right. Motion has been moved and seconded. Any objections to this or discussion on adjustment or amendment of the agenda? All right. Ms. Kelly.
I just wanted to note that Leslie Nichols has joined us via the Zoom, so we need to make a note of that for the meeting. Yeah.
Thank you very much. I see. Yeah, five participants now. Excellent. Nominations, and then, yes, we can go right to elections as well, if there are no objections. Normally, for the folks who are new, normally our practice is that we have nominations, and we have nominations, again, a following meeting, just to give some time for some folks to make sure they really want to do this. And the officers are the Chair, Vice Chair, and then the Secretary. Those are the three officers. But considering that it is July, then we're going to move, if no objections, to just have the nominations and elections all together. All right. Seems like there's no objections to that, so we have a motion second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. The agenda is amended. Thank you. Have everyone had the opportunity to review the minutes? I believe our last meeting was May 11. Any objections, changes, or sorry, any changes or corrections necessary for the minutes? If not, approve by acclamation. If there's no objections, seeing none, the minutes from May 11 are approved. Moving on to number five, citizen comments. Are there any citizens wishing to address the commission on items not, that will not be already on the agenda this evening? Sir, please, if you could approach, state your name and your address.
My name is Matthew Gerling, 8928 Powell Avenue. You'll have to excuse me. I have never done this before. So this is my first time owning a home. I wanted to just make a couple of comments on the 9001 Manchester project.
So, sorry, understand. That's actually on the agenda tonight, so you'll have an opportunity to address the commission at that time. No problem. Appreciate it. I understand. So, yep, and it'll be coming up pretty quickly, so we'll get that. All right. We have no old business. First item is our new business. This is P&amp;Z 22010 Kitchen Conservatory Amendment to the Conditional Use Permit at 9001 Manchester Road. Is the applicant here this evening, or the applicant's representative? If you could please tell us about the amendment to the CUP?
I'm Lou Kianini of Kianini Architects. With me is Tanner Smith, who's also with us, who's the project architect, actually, on this project. And what we're doing at this point is presenting a revision to the exterior design, not particularly to the site plan. The site plan and the landscape plan are, in essence, the same as we were approved several months ago. What we've done is work with Ann Corry and also Richard Tao, who is a design consultant to Ann and good friend. He's the former architect for the May Company, and I think he's a very respected designer also. What we've done is, after looking at the original design, after getting the planning zoning plan submitted and approved, we then got into the actual building documents on the building itself. And when we did that, there were several areas that Ann really wanted to really address again. The one concern she had is our original design, if you look at it, is really a typical retail. It's a nice building, but it looks like a typical retail with storefront, windows, basically, and some ephesus on the building. And what she really wanted is something more expressive, more contemporary, that really expresses her business. It's not a retail business primarily. It's a school. And she wanted something that really produced a vision of that school. So what we did is we sort of started with the original design. We had, if you'll remember, originally, we had the cube at the west end of the building, and that basically is the main focus of the building, and that's where the main classroom is and studio that they have. So what we've done is basically make that a complete glass block, a box, I'm sorry. And it doesn't have any emulations. It's basically butt glazing throughout, so it's going to be a very slick glass box. And with that, we basically then had done a masonry building going with that with very little detailing, because what we wanted to do is keep this as a minimalistic, classic, contemporary design, and I think that's what we've done in this case. This is the building she wants to do. And as of about three weeks ago, the costs have come in, and she's basically indicated to Don Music and Music Instruction to proceed with demolition on the site while basically submitting the drawings for permits. So we want, and then basically, as of Friday, she stopped that because she wants to know she's going to be able to do the building that she really wants. So basically, what I've handed out here are two things. One is sort of explaining the revised exterior design in about nine points. And then the page behind it is a response to the review by the staff. And if you want to go item by item, I think we can address each one of them, and I think very truthfully, this design really addresses that. So let's take the first sheet. Basically, the original design was a typical retail. It's a nice building, but it's really more typical retail. And I can spell retail better than I've done here. And then the other, the revised design is unique to the school, to the cooking school, and it's simple, expressive, and we think it's distinctive classical contemporary design. It's basically a transparent box that really lets you see into that classroom from the street. And basically, that's exactly what she wanted. It's not in the Manchester corridor, so it really doesn't need to meet the requirements of the Manchester corridor. But I think if you really go through it, you'll find that it really does. One of the things that is in there is, you know, whether or not you want, it needs to be, have elements based on the architectural style. Well, the style is contemporary architecture, so I don't need carnises. I don't need columns. I don't need piers. So it basically is contemporary. I know the staff indicated they thought it looked like concrete, a regular concrete block, but I think that was in the rendering, I think because it was toned gray, because it bears no resemblance except in size to concrete block. The other thing, there's, I know there's an issue about compatibility with neighbors. Well, there's really no continuity of architecture along that street. I think this will be in contrast, and I think it'll set a new style for that street. The interest, I think the question on the entry, well, I don't know what more we can do than recess the entry, accent it, have an entry, doors, double doors. All the sidewalks lead there. It's accent lit, and basically, the signage location also identifies it as the entry. And as I mentioned earlier, the site and landscape design is basically the same. We did actually, as of today, do a little bit accommodation to the neighbor to the west to make sure they had a walkway through without having to go through a planting area, and I think we got that resolved. We had a note from them earlier today. But basically, it's meant to be a glass cube, which basically symbolizes the real use of this building. It's a school. It's not a retail. It's not a rug shop. I think our original design, when I looked at the site today, the rug shop across the street looks very much like our original design. And I think that's more appropriate for the original building we did. This is really unique. And I think that one of the things we've done is we've got a video that, I can't believe we got done, as of about 1:00 this afternoon, we were shown a video at the office that two of the women in the office had put together on another project, and it looked so good. I said, we should have done that for this. Well, in three hours, they put this together. You might want to look at it. A little bit of a simplified version, but I think it'll show you really what we're intending here. We're intending on sort of very simple, very dramatic architecture, and basically contemporary design.
No, you asked for it. You get it.
I think I might have mentioned. I don't know if you all knew. It's been six years. Project has been off, been on, started again. Eric, pandemic hit. Had no, no vision of going forward. While you're speaking, again, when I came.
Oh, the video might be too.
Color of the courthouse? Yeah. Got an award for that building. Got eight awards for that building, too. Masonry awards.
They're only 1-0s. They don't help all that much, but that's all I need. They're only 1-0s, but, or 1-2-5s, or whatever the smallest one is.
All right, hold on. All right.
Hi. I've already got it as a question. I'm not even going to try to look. I'm just going to ask.
However, do you have different shine? Can even polish them. They look like.
Yeah, and that's a question I've got. That's a question I think staff had, too. Give it just another minute or so, and if we're not able to get it to work in just the interest of expediency, I think we'll move on.
Okay. I'd be trying to do. This one's not working now either. Um.
We'll maybe share it with them.
Here, here's another. Hold on.
What format's it in, Whitney?
Oh, so it's the click share that's the issue?
Yeah.
You have to flip those transparencies really fast to make the video, though.
Yeah. Quick preface to the video. The video begins looking at the south facade of the proposed building, which is the main entryway with the glass cube kind of to the left, and then it will circle all the way around the building.
Basically, as you can see, the glass cube allows vision into that classroom, which is really the feature that she's really interested in presenting. That gives you the vision of the building we're talking about.
Yep. Appreciate that. And certainly can see the depth of the main entrance there as well. That's helpful. I am noticing a difference if I'm not correct, though, from the rendering, or at least what we have of, in terms of the screening on top, I notice there's three distinct HVAC units, it looks like, or mechanicals on top. I don't see any of them in this. Is that a perspective, or is that a change? Because I could see them on the rear.
HVAC equipment, which is the largest piece.
Yep.
And there are three smaller exhaust fans.
Yeah, for hoods. Yeah.
We have, we have screens around them. We prefer not to do that because you really need air movement around an exhaust fan. That's something that we have screened them, so there will be three separate there.
All right. I appreciate that, and the video was helpful, so I'm glad that we're able to get it working. Thank you.
And if you want to go, like I say, if you want to go item by item on the review by staff, I can do that on, on the response page with the second page.
I think we'll, we may do that, but first, we will go to staff report. We'll do some questions from the commissioners, and then if we need to, we can go to that. But Ms. Kelly, over to you for staff report, please.
Sorry. Whitney Kelly, on behalf of the City of Brentwood, as the applicant has indicated, this did receive prior approval at the beginning of the year in January. They are before you tonight because of the change in the elevations to the structure. The prior approved elevations consisted of a brick ephesus at the very top band and a stone veneer with wood panels for the rooftop mechanical screening. The proposed elevations now include, as the applicant has indicated, the ground face concrete masonry unit with, that is prefinished, colored concrete block with a gray exposed advocate aggregate in an almond bark color. So this is what was a prior approval and the use of the various materials. The architectural standards within the GC District limits the use of metal siding, which this project does not have, and if mechanical HVAC equipment that is installed on the roof is to be visually screened. In the staff report, I did indicate they have the exposed, separate, three separate areas. I recommended that all of the rooftop equipment be screened within one single unit, so it creates a uniform base instead of the three separate, which only highlights their distinct differences. So while the project is not within the Manchester corridor, we often look at the design guidelines and the standards of that district to pull out throughout the city to create a more design uniform standard. That district requires building materials that should be varied and complementary with three colors per elevation, and provides a list of materials that are approved and not approved materials. And while the table is intended to provide direction, it is not intended to represent an absolute approval or disapproval, so that is your review. But it does include that smooth face concrete block and painted smooth concrete masonry units are a generally unacceptable building material. While it also does say, "Concrete including precast panels may be used when incorporating color, texture, and architectural finished features as an acceptable material." So in addition, it talks about building details, and in this instance, I recommended, I highlighted the building entrances are to be clearly delineated and clear transition from the exterior to the interior. Every main entrance is required to have a special emphasis when compared to other portions of the building. So again, here are the elevations and the use of the materials and the color sample block that's been passed around. As the applicant has indicated, the change in the glass cube is to create a more modern aesthetic with Milan less glass design. I did have a concern that the color material and the concrete texture of it was very similar to a concrete masonry unit, concrete block, and therefore, I recommend that you discuss that and provide direction if necessary, or if you, since it is a discretionary review, if you are fine with that, then make a recommendation to the Board of Aldermen. I had, and then I, here I note that the rooftop screening, I did include that as a recommended condition of approval to screen all of the rooftop equipment within a single screening. So if you wish to revise that, that would also take a separate motion. So the drawings also show a wall sign and a monument sign. The monument sign does not appear to meet with the requirements of 410 of the city sign regulations, so therefore, a condition is that all signs shall be, meet with the standards of the city sign regulations, or they will have to come back for your review and approval of a comprehensive sign plan. Since the staff report was written, the adjacent property owner has talked with both the applicant and myself regarding concerns of the landscaped island adjacent to their building and access to the rear of their building. So you can see here, in the prior approved plans from 2019 and earlier this year, there was to be a larger landscaped island here. In order to provide access to the back of the building, there was striping one of the parking spaces and reducing this island a bit. The, Mr. Smith, Tanner Smith, has indicated that it would still meet code and that it has to be a minimum of five feet in width, and we, 50 square feet. So we feel like that's an, that can be approved at staff level. So, but all of the other site conditions is generally in keeping with the prior approved plan. I'm available with any questions.
Thanks, Ms. Kelly. I'll then open it up to commissioners for any questions, either of staff. I did just want to make sure, again, I'm a little slow on this one, but I'm looking at the two renderings kind of side by side, and just want to say, the initial, and this is the south elevation, I'm just trying to compare the south elevation with the new proposed south elevation, where, again, you can see the three discrete screened areas here. In the initial proposal, there was only a single area that you can kind of see over the other screening. Has the actual elevation of the building without the screen changed? No, it's the same height, except we're not putting a screen running all the way across.
Oh, sir?
Yep.
Whitney, you just speak.
Sorry, yeah. We got to make sure it gets into the record.
Missing of the, the building is, is the same.
So what we're missing is the screening.
I went to the building, the housing behind is at a considerably lower level. I didn't realize it was that low. I thought it was a little bit higher. I don't think they're going to see the, any of the roof screens from the house between the housing and all the trees that are on the housing project, on the housing side of the fence that's going to be existing there. I, I don't think they're going to be able to see, if they are able to see the HVAC unit, which is taller, that's screened. I think the other hoods are not going to be visible.
And then from the south view, though, from Manchester Road, because again, what I'm looking at is the diagram presented.
Put a photo, and I didn't bring that, from, from across the street at the rug retail center, across the street, and I can't see, there is a hood on the bowling alley, but you can't see that either because of the elevation of where the bowling alley is sitting relative to Manchester Avenue.
Thank you. Again, open it up to commissioners for questions. Mr. Moore?
Mr. Chairman, in review.
Jeff, turn your mic on.
Thank you. In review of the two plans, the old plan and the new plan, I think there was a discrepancy on the landscaping, the density of the trees along the back line. Can you speak to that, please?
Correct. And the January review, the density of the trees did not match the prior approved plan in 2019, so a condition of the approval at that time included that it shall match the prior approved plan in 2019. The applicant had indicated they'd be willing to do that. With the reduction of that one part of parking lot island on the Jendel building, it won't. building, it won't fit a tree. They had concerns about the roots of the tree damaging their building. So I have indicated that as long as they move that one tree to, within that buffer area, as well as bring it up to what was prior approved in 2019, that I felt that should be sufficient.
That answers my question. Thank you.
Any other questions from commissioners? Ms. Builderback?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I've had the, the privilege to be on the planning commission for a while. And one of the things that we did a long time ago, like, I mean, we're talking over 20 years ago, when we started having some of these major developments come into Brentwood, was as a commission, we gave some thought as to what we wanted to set as far as the tone for the developments that were coming into Brentwood. And I think we've been pretty consistent with the application. You know, some of them are planned developments. You know, we've had GC items and of course, this one in particular isn't technically in the Manchester corridor. But you know, I'm thinking maybe at some point, we should expand perhaps the Manchester corridor to cover all of the Manchester corridor that's actually in Brentwood. And so, I mean, it's like literally right there. But when we've done this in the past, we would have developers come in and they would propose various types of masonry units, CMUs and concrete block or CMUs, concrete masonry units. And we actually declined them on all of these projects. We went to the EFS, which was something that was considered to be an upgrade on it. The amount of anything that was concrete was very minimal as far as a product. It was always considered to be a less desirable product. And then, for example, what would have been proposed on this initial proposal that we've reviewed a few times. I understand that, you know, times change, inflation changes, prices go up, and you know, there's a interest by the development community or business owners understandably in wanting to decrease and reduce their costs. Also understanding that this was a proposal that I was really excited about before, and I know as the City of Brentwood that we've been excited about as well. I do however, have a real concern about the CMU material. And this might be something I think that could warrant a bigger discussion around it, possibly taking it to a site plan review. Because it's such a major issue, because it's not just this building. This building is now designed completely differently. It's designed as a modern take with a material that has some basis in, you know, a material that we had, had basically taken out of most of the planned developments and other developments that we've worked on in the City of Brentwood for, for quality and appearance issues. If we approve something for this specific place, no matter how much the community wants, you know, the kitchen conservatory and how much that we appreciate the business owner, if we do that for this development, it's not going to just be for this development because you can't operate in a vacuum. So I'm talking about 20 years worth or more of trends in the way that this planning commission has looked at CMU use in its various developments in commercial applications, be it in various districts. So if we're going to make a change and consider something like this for this building, and, and I'm not sure that I'm in favor of doing that for this building, but I think we need to have a thoughtful conversation about it, not just in one night, but hopefully with a lot of commission members attending a site plan, because it's going to be a precedent that is going to change what we've been doing for a long time. And I would argue that if we're going to do that, we need to do it with eyes wide open, understand what the potential future ramifications could be, and consider all of the new developments we've had, what materials they are, what they look like, you know, what we like as a community and what we want to see, and also what we envision, you know, for the, for along Manchester. You know, we're investing this huge amount of money as a city in doing something that is incredibly groundbreaking in the Brentwood bound, bound project related to stormwater. But I'm on the 353 board and I've reviewed the plans for it. And I mean, it's really going to be outstanding and it's going to be very architecturally consistent with the original version of this plan. And it would be diametrically opposed in look to the new proposal, which, you know, the owner has decided they want a more modern look. My understanding is that really it's being driven financially, with due respect to the applicant. So I would just ask the commission members to consider having a fuller conversation about what we want, not just for this application, but how it's going to impact our future developments in the City of Brentwood, because it will establish a precedent no matter what we do. And I might have more things, but that's, that's kind of like the big point. I think the, the sign thing is pretty clear. And I'm not sure about the, what you brought up, Mr. Chairman, about the, you know, we see the elevations, the different views, and one of the new proposed south elevations has the three walls on the top for screening. We do screen the HVAC units. Sometimes we've had developers put up parapet walls and things like that to hide the HVAC unit. So I don't know if we need to do any line of sight as opposed to the architect going out and looking at what he thinks it looks like from across the street. We have required prior developers in the past to submit line of sight information to us as far as what that actually looks like from a measurement standpoint, from the surrounding properties and the roadway. And I think that's, that's it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Builderback. Please.
First of all, have you looked at that material? And you think that looks like a concrete block? Well, then we're not on the same page. That's a premium material to brick. There's more cost in that than brick. And it's a really good finished, it's very much like a precast unit. And it may be called a precast unit rather than CMU. But I, you're, you're, your sort of discussion of that being another concrete block is absurd. That's just my opinion.
Well, and with all due respect, I would say that it is listed as a concrete masonry unit, a CMU. That's what it's listed on the product. And that's the product that I'm talking about is a CMU.
It's a premium CMU.
It's still a CMU. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So it's a verbal thing?
Sir?
Could I?
Yeah, go ahead.
I'll try and weigh in here. It is a CMU product without a doubt. The Manchester corridor guidelines that were listed in Ms. Kelly's report break down a smooth face CMU product is typically in a disallowed material. An architecturally decorative concrete masonry is typically in the allowed material. So we do disagree with your summary or your classification of the material as a whole. Not that it is not considered CMU. We definitely believe that it's considered CMU. But we did not feel when reading the Manchester corridor guidelines through the design of this building, that the CMU that we have chosen here would fall on the right-hand side of that disallowed materials category, but instead would be considered an architecturally allowed, architecturally decorative, concrete block. And so we, we also philosophically didn't feel like we would be breaking any precedents or setting a new precedent for the area of Brentwood, because it seems like that material has already been allowed along the Manchester corridor, whether or not the community members have decided to actually build with it. And to address one of your second points for the cost, the building elevations that were approved in January, we, we, I just want to try and convince you that we genuinely did redesign the building based on the desires, the aesthetic desires of our client. And it was not so much driven by cost. The cost for the building that we had previously approved in January came in slightly above $3 million. With the redesigned building, including wrapping 75% at least of the exterior in this premium concrete block, the price has almost gone up by 25% to $4 million. So the cost is actually not less than it was six months ago. It's, it's slightly more.
Thank you. And there's also inflation that's happened in the last six months too. So I'm sure that has some to do with it. But the point remains about the greater use of materials in the City of Brentwood, from my opinion on a CMU that warrants further discussion. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Ms. Forman, I think you were looking to weigh in.
Simply by the nature of the disconnect between the applicant and the board, I think this does warrant going to plan review to actually really get into the issue and talk about it. Knowing this material and the expenses, it can be done very well, but it takes some thought. There's, off the top of my head, the intent would be to, and correct me if I'm wrong, the intent really is to make this look almost like a stone or a high-end finished material. That typically means we're paying attention to joints, mortar color, block sizing and spacing. Some strategies that have been used in the past are maybe an eight-inch block, alternating with a four-inch block, sometimes mixing color, even going to a smoother ground face than this. But definitely, my humble opinion at the moment is this is too warm. It needs to be more of a cool gray to really blend in with the material and make it look monolithic. So I think there's enough there that the facade of this building could be made acceptable. Lifetime and lifecycle costing on the concrete decorative units tends to be better than the EFS. So I'm, I'm not opposed to actually fulfilling the rest of that conversation and making sure that this is done well. Because this could be done badly. If you just get the regular masons and you give them an expensive block and they're just throwing the expensive block up just like they put gray concrete units from Home Depot, it's not going to look good. So I think there's some project controls that, that we could discuss about that. I do have some other questions. The separate enclosures for the exhaust fans, are you driving directly through the roof? You're trying to avoid horizontal rated ductwork within the space? Is that why you've got three separate out?
That is correct. They're basically coming directly up from the hoods. They're on the, the various kitchens.
So the other piece on that is, on the facade, you've now changed it to a monolithic mullionless system. You're not showing a spandrel in the upper panel. Is that a spandrel?
It is a spandrel in the upper, probably upper four feet.
Okay. And then in the renderings especially, it was in the samples, very clear glass.
It is.
You're not going with low E coatings or?
Oh, it's going with low E and it has a slight tint to it additional because it's on the south side.
My apologies. Low emissivity coatings within the glass that reduce the heat gain in the room, therefore driving bigger mechanical units on the roof for more air conditioning. So it typically works better to put low emissivity glass in to reduce the amount of footprint that you have on the roof. They're all related.
That is, that is correct.
I'd like to clarify one thing about the rooftop mechanical equipment. There are four separate items being screened. The largest would be the actual rooftop mechanical unit. The other three are exhaust hoods that are directly over the commercial range tops in each of the kitchens in the building. And then, like Lou said, they just prefer to go straight up through the roof directly over top of the ranges.
So those aren't high plume, they're just typical exhaust?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay. I haven't done a single story with a kitchen in a bit, sorry. Is that a rated assembly that goes from the hood to the roof deck?
Yes.
Okay.
It is rated, I think.
Oh, okay. Yes, yes, the connection is rated.
And then the package, I'm assuming it's just one large package?
It also has a fire suppression system in it and it is rated to the, to the roof.
Okay. So turning that horizontally to group them together would create additional costs.
That's a very expensive method of doing it.
Just to clarify, I wanted to, the suggestion was to move the screening outward so that encompasses all of that. It's not moving those mechanical parts inward to the center of the building. Yeah.
The only thing with that is it, then it makes the screen a very important part of the, the massing of the building. And we don't want to do that.
That would humbly suggest there's a cost benefit ratio to be had there with additional roof penetrations and more metal as opposed to rated ductwork inside the building.
You're right. You're correct there. That was the other issue, the cost.
And speaking of grease, do you have an underground grease interceptor or is there going to be a receptacle behind the building at grade?
It's incorporated in the, it's in our, yeah, I'm sorry. That's part of our site plumbing. Is the grease receptor.
Oh, it's underground?
Yes.
Okay. As far as general design, the building that was there is a 1950s modernist building. So we're not that much far apart. I kind of, I'm a little sad to see the canopy over the front entry go, but you have reassessed the front door. And this is designed as a single user building for now and forever, correct?
That is correct. As I would classify our client, this would be her kind of all-in, rest of her career kind of operation.
One thing I might mention also, you, you mentioned the quality of, of putting this material together. That is going to be part of the whole scenario is it has to be done really right. Because you want a uniform wall that looks like a granite wall. And between the, the selection of the mortar, how it's put together, that, that will be part of the quality control.
Buck pointing, jock, block sizing, et cetera. At the moment though, I still concur with Ms. Builderback that as the submission is now, I think it does need to go to plan review, because I don't see the assurances in this document that actually create a standard that we can hold the executed building to codified in this document.
Does this mean now we have to comply with the Manchester corridor, even though it's not there?
No, correct me if I'm wrong, but what we're saying is, two weeks from now, we're going to discuss this in detail at a plan review section. We're not adding different requirements. We're taking this to a sub meeting.
I guess everyone understands that this now is going to halt the demolition permit and maybe the project.
Understand. I also understand that you've come back to us, you had an approved plan that had been approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission as well as the Board of Aldermen, and you've requested a modification to that.
I understand.
So we understand that. We absolutely get it. Demolition started when you didn't have an approved plan for your modification. So that's not our concern, I would say. It's our concern to make sure that we move forward in expedient manner. We're having this meeting. We'll have our sub plan review if that's what we need, if that's what the commission's will is at that point. And then we will have that review in an expedient manner as well. Now, that timing that was to start demolition before you had an approved modification was not our decision.
That had, okay. They were applying for it, but they weren't starting it. So no demolition has started.
Okay.
It's just been stopped.
Got you. Any other questions from commissioners?
So it looks like on the original plans, there were less units on the rooftop. Did I, are those added due to changes in the kitchen build out, site floor plan or?
My best understanding, the, the previously approved in, in January of this year, I was not involved with the project at that time. But my best understanding is that it was just an oversight. There have always been a minimum of three commercial range tops in this building. And each of those will require a direct hood exhaust penetrating through the roof. So it must have been left out of the previous submittal.
Any other questions? Do we have any members of the public? And I believe we do, wishing to address, is it Mr. Gerling? Yeah, wishing to address some of this issue.
Thank you, sir. So like I was saying earlier, I'm a first time homeowner and I'm really glad to see that everyone's focused on the front of the building. I live directly behind it. So I had a couple of questions about being behind it and, you know, living in Brentwood, we love, you know, having the backyard for our kids and things like that. I was just mostly trying to, and I apologize again if this is not the place to do it, how I maintain, you know, the quiet habitation enjoyment of the home. I get that demolition happens. Not really a question of that. It's a question of when everything is finished, you know? Are there trees to block light? Are there privacy fences, things along those lines? Ms. Kelly has sent me all of the forms for that and I was able to look over those. I appreciate it. I did have a question about water runoff. I noticed in the site plan that we do live lower. And one of the things about that is that the site plan had in the corner next to my house that the ground level continues to drop from the parking lot into my yard. And I currently have a dry basement. I would like to obviously keep it that way. I would like to obviously keep it that way. So I just wanted to make sure that that was already, you know, addressed and I probably just don't understand something that's in the plan. Just wanted to make sure that all of those things were addressed. It sounds like they pretty much were. The other question that I had was, and again, this may not be the question for it, is the hours of operation? Because again, quiet habitation of the home, I realize I'm adjacent to Manchester. I don't expect it to be like I live, you know, out in, you know, the sticks, if you will. But, you know, are they able to, if business is great, are they able to go to, you know, 24-hour events? Like, I highly doubt that's going to happen, but, you know, will they be having parties at 11:00 PM at night while I'm trying to have my kids sleep, you know, and things along those lines? The direct line of sight to my backyard, of which my master bedroom abuts, you know, questions like that.
So this is the place where those things can be addressed? And so I guess I would say, and often it is a conversation between you and the petitioner to talk about things like water runoff, to be able to review the plan so you can see exactly where that water is going to be going. In terms of hours of operation, that's something that's in code. I mean, in our ordinances and part of the use of when they are able to operate. And I can't recall the hours, but I believe that Ms. Kelly probably will be able to do that.
I'm sorry, I didn't know that was codified. Does anyone know the answer to that?
Yeah. So we can get an answer for that of hours of operation. You know, again, it is, as you described, it's, you're budding a commercial area and so there will be some noise. I think you called, I believe you had the letter that you submitted as well.
Yes.
Yep. And so I know that one of the concerns again was with the patio and, you know, what was the noise level going to be there during business operations and that sort of thing. We do have noise ordinances in Brentwood and so after a certain time, it has to be something that you basically can't hear off property. It has to be below certain decibels. So that is something that we do have ordinances and code enforcement for if there's a problem. And I think that those things can be addressed. But in terms of runoff and screening, those are things that absolutely I suggest a conversation with the petitioner to basically talk about, hey, what's that going to look like for me? I hear you. We were talking about the front of the building, main entrance, that's one big thing, but I did hear that from the rear, especially since you are a little lower, that's not great for water. It is good for visibility because those mechanicals will be screened and you're actually going to see a building without all of those mechanical things on the top.
Right, right, yes. And I, from the perspective of, you know, just having had a dinner for my mom on her birthday today in my backyard, I do think that we would be able to see the units, the HVAC units on top of there. Because I can see right now, if you would like me to give an example, I can see the ladders along the building, so if those are any indication of how tall those units are, they probably are visible. My neighbor next to me, Gail Schmidt, who's directly behind, she's unfortunately not here today. She wanted to be but wasn't feeling well, she twisted her knee, has lived in that building ever since the bowling alley was there, so she's fully aware and she does appreciate the whole eight-foot privacy fence and all of that. She said that the bowling alley used to have beer bottles thrown over and bowling balls in the backyard and things like that. And it sounds like with a, what are we doing, a 16 to 18-inch landscaping as well as an eight-foot privacy fence, it sounds great.
I believe it'll be a little bit of a different crowd at the kitchen conservatory than at the bowling alley.
I do think. And I, I don't know if the petitioner's listening or is here today, but my wife and I will be one of the first people to go. So, yeah, we're very excited about having it be part of date night, but.
Appreciate it. Thank you for your comments and I do encourage you to speak directly with petitioner on those concerns as well as with city because those things, this is exactly why we have meetings like this, to address those, make sure that at least you understand what the plan is and if there are any concerns, that may, make sure that we can address those quickly.
How would I go about reaching the petitioner? Just as like a.
Talk to the gentleman behind you.
Oh, yeah, so, yeah.
Let me answer that a little bit.
Please.
I saw the letter this afternoon. Basically, I think all of his concerns really are met. You know, we're not going to be putting any more water into areas behind us. We can't do that. Also, lighting is going to be directed only onto our site at a lower level than what the lights were there for the bowling alley. And one of the things, I know you're, there's an issue about the outdoor area is not in the back of the building, it's on the side of the building. There's a whole series of things, but I think we can get together and talk about that, but I think there's nothing that I think we can, we wouldn't address.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that because the patio is actually pretty much, the patio couldn't get any farther away from my house. I'm catty-cornered to it on the complete opposite side on the east side and the patio's on the west, so that's really not as much of a concern for me had it been, you know, the opposite situation. But I do, I did realize, or you guys can correct me if I'm wrong, but that's probably the first like outdoor space that, outdoor entertainment space that Brentwood really has. I think the closest is over in Rock Hill at like Ferrato's perhaps, so this is actually going to be something new. I think it's going to be great.
Obie Clark's has their patio as well, but there's limited, there are very much limited ones.
Yeah, there's really not a lot, or I haven't, I haven't gone to them, so, yeah, or thank you.
Yep. Ms. Kelly?
In the packet is the site plan and I did include the prior approval. My review of the, of this project was limited to request as it was, this project was reviewed regarding the site plan at prior meetings. But if you can see here, you have a pretty much, let's see if I can get in tight, if I can answer it for you, a 16.33 foot buffer area between the parking lot and there's eight-foot fence that's proposed, that was approved as part of the prior site plan. And over here, that looks to be about 18.9. I'd have to look closely, see if I can get it close. But it is, you know, 16, 17 feet from the parking space and then the building is 60 feet away, 59.92. So is this the storm sewer you're referring to? Because it looks like the storm sewer line follows to the south and comes down and then would be submitted here and then entered into the MSD.
I was looking at the elevation of like the actual land and this may just be my ignorance again from not understanding this. If the sewer has a way of pulling it back despite ground level of water.
Yeah. You have to speak into the thing. So, I mean, I don't want to get into it back and forth because I can show you the plans.
Yes, I think it may just be you explaining to me really.
But it, this was all reviewed at, yeah, this was all.
I'm not objecting, it's just, I'm just kind of asking.
No. It, this was all, stormwater is all reviewed by MSD for this project.
Okay.
So they oversee that. I was just pointing out that it, based upon these drawings, that would go towards Man, the stormwater runs towards Manchester and not towards the back of the project.
Okay, so that was just a misunderstanding on my part because my, my thought was if it, there's like a five-foot drop from where the, from where this starts over by the parking spot in the bottom left of the screen there, of the green area, towards where my house is, there's this catty corner, pretty much to the lot. There was like a, in one of the illustrations, there was like a five-foot drop-off, but if they, there is a way for the water to pretty much fall into the ground and then just kind of bring itself back towards Manchester.
The curbing will direct it, and so what Ms. Kelly was saying was MSD reviews that to make sure there's not runoff. So the curbing directs it to the drains, drains will push it to the front of the street.
Yeah, okay.
And so, I mean, what's on the regular unimproved terrain, that'll go to your yard, but it does now.
Yeah, okay.
Everything else, it's not going to sheet off, it's going to go into actual.
So I don't have to worry about anything in my yard?
Yeah.
Cool.
Mr. Paul?
Thank you. So I concur with the curb comment. You did raise another question. I don't see any wall packs on the building. I don't see any light posts in the parking lot. How are you achieving code minimum safety lighting in the, in the parking lot?
There is a lighting plan.
That was reviewed at the prior approval back in January.
Okay.
And as, and prior to that, even in 2019, when it was initially approved.
Okay.
Yeah.
The lighting plan basically remained to the original design.
All right. Appreciate everyone's time on this and the work that's been done. This has been a project under review for some time. I guess I have made that comment, I think the last time, I'm very thrilled to actually have something rather than a bowling alley that's been closed for years, but want to open it up to the commission because it does sound like there is some interest from at least a few commissioners of having a subcommittee on this to review. Wanted to see if any commissioners, Ms. Builderback, one second, but just if any other commissioners had another opinion, wanted to bring this forward, that's also a possibility. But our paths forwards are to bring this forward for either for a vote basically or to refer it to subcommittee, which is, is not uncommon for some of the things we do. Ms. Builderback, please.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion that we send this to Site Plan Review Committee for further discussion.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion on this motion?
Can I ask a question? What are we reviewing at this meeting?
I think it would be the change to the, the design is really taking a look at.
Mine or just the block?
The block, yeah.
A question I had there, is switchface block architectural allowed?
So as I indicated in my presentation, it says concrete including precast panels may be used when incorporating color, texture, and architectural finish features as an acceptable material. Generally unacceptable material includes painted smooth concrete masonry units unless used in locations behind screen walls and then smooth face concrete block.
What is rough face concrete block allowed?
It's not indicating it's an acceptable material.
I thought it was.
It says decorative concrete masonry unit or architectural cement block.
Would this not be considered a decorative architectural unit?
I think that's a discussion that would occur at the January 27th, July 27th meeting.
My other assurance is that you all know how escalation of prices is going on.
Mr. Chairman, point of order, please. When we get to the point of discussion on a motion, we do not have further discussion from the applicant. And I would like to ask us to have further discussion within the commission and then call for a vote, please.
That's correct, Ms. Builderback. Thank you for reminding me that.
That's fine.
So we do have a motion and a second. Do we have discussion from the commission? I will put this comment forward, which I appreciate and thank you for that point of order, Ms. Builderback. I understand, I would say, the escalation costs. I understand the desire to get, moving forward with demolition and to get building on this. I also understand this is a project that's been going for six years. We've reviewed it multiple times, we've approved it. This comes back to us as a change and so we are going to do our job, which is to do the due diligence on this. And this is a significant change in the style that we approved only, you know, less than six months ago. So I think that's the point. I understand the applicant is ready to get moving, but this has been long delayed and I think that a couple more weeks, which is what we're talking about here, to have this discussion is not out of the realm of, of order. So we have a motion, we have a second, we'll have a roll call vote on the motion, please.
Terry Builderback?
Yes.
Mark Tavas?
Yes.
More votes, no? Terry?
Yes.
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 James?
Yes.
Chairman votes, sir?
No, that's its time. All right. So this will be reviewed on the July 27th.
At 6:00 PM.
6:00 PM. And we will then move forward quickly with, after that discussion. So again, appreciate your time, appreciate the proposal, really do look forward to, and we understand the concerns raised. Would like to get this site repurposed and have the kitchen conservatory part of Brentwood and we will move forward on that July 27th. So thank you.
If I may ask, is there anything that I should have the applicant bring for that meeting that would help in further review? Is there any more detail you're looking for?
I would suggest a larger scale elevation of the south and the east facade.
Okay.
With some better detailing and description of the color and texture of the block, maybe some thought toward defining the tuck pointing and the joint style and possibly some variation or enhancement on the actual units of the concrete block to break up the typical eight-inch module.
Okay. I think that would be helpful, thank you.
And to add to that, Mr. Chairman, any other architectural materials that you would wish to propose instead of what you've submitted this evening, like samples and further things specifying along those lines for any additional materials? And I think we got to the point, I mean, with all the units being screened on the top, I know we have the, the discussion still that we're having about how that's done, but I don't think that means that we have the need for the line of sight if we're screening the materials anyway. I don't think we need to do that, but I bring that up as a question since it came up with the gentleman who lives behind saying that he believes he can see the rooftop units, but if we're screening them, I don't know if it's necessary to do a line of sight. I'm like.
I would suggest that since the Kiedini team did lovely work this afternoon producing a sketch-up model in three hours in an animation, that it's a fairly simple issue of picking the right viewpoint elevation toward the building to actually do some still images of what's actually visible on the roof.
Okay.
That sounds like that is being asked.
Visible, yeah.
All right.
And we don't need to see like the, the way the lighting or anything like that is on the building, like we don't need to see any other details. Somebody brought that up tonight, we've already previously approved all that. So, I mean, any renderings, we don't really need to have that, do we?
If you wish to see what was prior approved, I'd be happy to share with you after me.
That would be good, to have like a full thing of what it was before. Like, I'm even interested on the backside of the building because I'm also cognizant of not putting up something that looks like a concrete block wall, like on the back, to make sure that it's cementable for the neighbors. Like, I mean, because every time we go through a project, you know, we try to improve the situation in the city of Brentwood, you know, from what we've had in the past. And if we can improve the situation for the neighbors, like if anything needs to be broken up further or something like that, considering we're changing to a different product, if we go to a different product, that might be something to talk about too. So if we had the old elevations of all of them, that would be helpful for any discussion. And like what you said, with the, the full size, larger like elevations, that'll, that would be really helpful for sure. And I know, like, we usually have, a lot of builders will bring in stuff like that too, so.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate it. We'll move on to our next order of business, which is P&amp;Z 22011, Minor Subdivision of 3,000 South Brentwood Boulevard. And actually, this is a fairly new one to me, the city is the petitioner in this, so. Ms. Kelly, over to you.
I will make this very, very brief. So as the city, as y'all are all aware, y'all, the Brentwood Bound project includes purchasing six acres from the Bi-State Metro site at 3,000 South Brentwood Boulevard for the wetland restoration along the creek. So in order to finalize that agreement and purchase the property, we have to actually create a separate lot. So that's what's before you tonight is a lot subdivision, a minor subdivision of dividing up the Bi-State Metro lot into two parcels. So we are in contract to purchase 6.17 acres. The total site is 21.9 acres and the, so the existing metro facility will remain on 15, approximately 15 acres, just over that. The subdivision code states that, you know, it's ministerial act, as long as it meets with the minimum standard of the zoning district in which it's located, it is to be approved. The lots are sufficiently large enough that we don't have any concerns. The adjusted lot two of Metro, for Metro is 15.036 acres with a lot width of 603 feet and a lot depth of 951 feet. And then the adjusted lot two would be, I'm sorry, six point, as I said, six acres with a lot width of 211 feet and a lot depth of 1,075 feet. So where the minimum district standard is a, an acre lot with 150 feet of lot width and lot depth. So you can see the whole split here. So this will be the remaining 16 acres and then here we are purchasing this area down here. Not included as part of the subdivision, the original lot one, which I understand was approved in 2019 for the creation of a substation for Amarin. So it's pretty straightforward. So, but this is in furtherance of the Brentwood Bound Park Development Plan, so we have to bring it for you, so.
I know we have some new members, so we have different kinds of things that come in front of us. Some are discretionary, i.e. we were using our judgment, such as we were just having a conversation about here earlier, others are ministerial, i.e. if it meets the requirements of ordinance and law, we say yes because that's what we're here to do is basically. And, and again, we're making sure that it does meet that. Staff provides, that's the guidance on that. City attorney is here as well to make sure that we're staying within the bounds of the law. Yes.
Just one thing I do need to note is I did catch the typo, the plan does say boundary adjustment when it really should say subdivision. So that is just a condition and they're aware of that. They'll make that clean up before proceeding with, to the Board of Aldermen.
And we're doing preliminary and final in this.
Yeah.
Okay. Any questions or discussion from commissioners? Do I have a motion?
I move to approve the minor subdivision of Lot 2 of the Deer Creek subdivision preliminary plat and recommend approval of, approval of the final plat for the subdivision of 3,000 South Brentwood Boulevard as presented in the staff report.
We have a motion for Mr. Favazza, do I have a second? Second, my Ms. Builderback, all those in favor, actually, and we'll do a roll call on this, sorry, it was a vote, roll call vote, please, Mr. Moore.
Mr. Chairman. Sherry Builderback?
Yes.
Mark Favazza?
Yes.
Jeff Moore votes yes. Lisa Sherring?
Yes.
Matt Foreman?
Yes.
Jeff Hunt?
Yes.
And Tricia Graves? Unanimous, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. All right, moving on to our amended agenda, which will be C. Sorry, that is new business C, which is nominations and elections for officers. Again, we have a chair, vice chair, and secretary. Currently, I serve in the chair role, Mr. Favazza serves in the vice chair role, and Mr. Paul Moran serves as secretary. And that's it, so we will open up for a nominations, do we normally go secretary to president, president, secretary, or chairman, does that, which ways to go?
I think we go chairman.
Chairman, all right, we'll do chairman, because if someone wants to step in. All right, nominations for chairman for the Brentwood Planning and Zoning Commission. You may also self-nominate if you'd like.
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Builderback.
I would like to nominate Hart Nelson as chairman.
I will accept, thank you, Ms. Builderback.
So you don't have to self-nominate? No, I'm just kidding.
I have no shame, I would, but yes, I appreciate that. Any other nominations? All right, well, that will be easy. All those in favor, and we'll have, I guess, a vote for Hart Nelson as chairman, signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, same sign, I won't hold it against you. All right, thank you. I remembered, we have had that. Do we have any, so thank you, I will promise to attempt to avoid points of order going forward. Do we have any nominations for vice chair? As I believe I did before, I will nominate Mr. Mark Favazza for vice chair.
I will accept.
Any other nominations? All those in favor of Mr. Favazza as vice chair, signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Congratulations, another year. And for secretary, do we have any nominations, Ms. Builderback?
I'd like to nominate Paul Moran for secretary, he's not here, so therefore...
Mr. Moran is not here, but I think that I have it on fairly good authority that he would accept for one more year, these two-year terms seem to be reasonable. Any other nominations for secretary? All right, we have one candidate, all those in favor of voting for Paul Moran as secretary, and Jeff Moore filling in for him when he can't do it, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, thank you.
And Mr. Moore, you did an outstanding job tonight, this is no slight to you in that regard.
No.
Thank you, it's been my biggest role yet.
Do appreciate it, thank you, Ms. Builderback, for getting us back on track with elections. We do have, just one introduce, we had some new commissioners last month as well, but Tricia Graves is joining us, so we're very happy to have you here, and you will learn a lot about Brentwood on planning and zoning, I certainly have in my time here, so hope you enjoy it, but we're happy to have you, so, and I know we've had some other folks join, but I think we introduced ourselves last, last time around, so. All right, moving on to number eight, Aldermanic Report, seeing no Aldermen. Number nine, City Planning Directors' Report.
Sorry? We have a upcoming, at the next meeting, we do have a minor subdivision of the lot on St. Clair that would create two, for the purpose of two new homes. And we have been discussing needed, discussing needed text amendments to the code based upon several state legislations, so we, I have not had the chance to get that forward for this meeting, so I will try to bring it for the next one.
Andy? Yep, sorry, please.
Oh, and I'd be happy to, the prior, the board of Aldermen approved the addition for the Humane Society, they also approved the new apartment complex at 200 Hanley Industrial Court.
Excellent.
And y'all reviewed a project at 241 Hanley Industrial Court back last year, it never proceeded to the Board of Aldermen, it did just recently go to the Board of Aldermen within that one-year timeframe of your approval, so that did get approved.
That HVAC?
That was cleared to launch.
Okay, yep, oh, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah. So, the, those two projects, the 200 Hanley Industrial Court and 241 Hanley Industrial Court are, have asked for the city to consider its incentives, so we are starting that process as well. And Green Street has submitted their final plan, its middle for the redevelopment corp meeting on July 19th, so if you'd like to come and listen to that, you are more than welcome to, we are very excited about it.
Highly encourage you to do so, please, Ms. Builderback. If folks don't know, Ms. Builderback chairs the, was it the...
President of the 353 Redevelopment Board.
353, I can never remember.
I did attend the meeting earlier this summer, late spring, and it wasn't, it was very informational, so it was very insightful.
Awesome, yeah, so this is really exciting, and I just kind of want to give a highlight, especially because we have some brand-new members, and some of the ones that have been on here for a little while might not have been to this rodeo before, so, once we go to the next meeting, and we're looking at this developer as a potential master redeveloper to recommend to the Board of Aldermen, and they're, they've got their final plan, and when you hear the words "final," I don't want you to think of that as final, final, like that's what's going to get built. This is a concept plan, so we're looking to recommend a concept and the master developer to the Board of Aldermen, and then a whole bunch of negotiations happen, it goes back to the 353 Board, but at some point, after a whole lot of meetings and a whole lot of discussion, it then comes to the Planning and Zoning Commission, and then at that point, there'll be a whole new set of plans, and it's going to be like massive amounts of elevations and site plan coverage and all sorts of amenities and cool stuff, so it's a really, really neat and exciting project, and if you guys can swing the time, it's probably, last time it took like two and a half hours, but it was worth it, you definitely should come to that meeting to kind of get your feet wet and get more familiar with it, because we're going to compare the first preliminary plan to this final concept plan, essentially, and then that'll be, if, if it goes forward from there and the negotiations work out, then it'll come back to us with the full set of development plans and site development plans that we'll all go through, and I don't know how Mr. Chairman, the staff, or the commission will choose to go forward, but sometimes in the past, we've met a lot more frequently with weekly site plan meetings, depending on timeframes, but it's a lot of fun, and it's a super cool project, so wherever we go with this, um, yeah, you'll, it's going to be in front of the public so many times that they're going to be tired of hearing about it, and they're going to have so much information that they'll be like, oh, okay, this is great, like, I mean, as far as the information goes, so definitely come if you guys can.
I know Brentwood is only two square miles, but sometimes folks get set in their traffic patterns, and you don't see the new tunnel going in on Manchester, which is pretty phenomenal, you can't talk to the mayor without hearing about the Destination Playground that we're going to have, so there's just a lot of great stuff happening with this project.
And the stormwater thing too, and that was the whole point of it, yeah.
Yes, and we will not have flooding, less flooding, hopefully, so. Any other new business? All right, then we will have a motion for adjourn, for adjournment, so moved by Ms. Builderback, you have a second?
Second.
And we will stand adjourned at that point, thank you, everyone, have a great month.